So we're going to call the next meeting to order at six thirty-five roll call please. This is the, I'm sorry, this is the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees to precede the committee, the whole hearing, roll call.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
Present.
Present. So a couple of things in the mayoral update. One is, as usual, the Veterans Committee update. We did have a meeting with the construction team. Two of the members of the committee, village staff and Manhart Engineering took a walk to the site. They took some preliminary renderings that Manhart did, and they are now going to formalize those more in an actual two-scale rendering for what would fit on the site. It appears everything will fit as planned, and there doesn't have to be any real modifications to the footprint. So that's where that stands. We'll get those drawings back, and we will let you know when we move on to the next step. I also want to announce, so people can plan on their calendar. After many, many years of planning, on the seventeenth, the Bowler Construction and the subcontractors are going to start mobilizing on the park across the street, expanding the fence line, starting to work out there. I believe they're even out there a little bit today. And then, so everybody in the public knows, and the trustees, there will be invites going out to public officials, past and present, but we have a groundbreaking on July twenty-eighth at eleven AM, which is a Friday. That's it for my reports. We have a couple of citizens that signed up to address the board. So trustee Peterson, can you pass that sheet down to us? Thank you. The clerk will read the public comment rules, and she'll call your name, come up to the podium. Make sure to speak into the microphone, so anybody on Zoom can hear you. Thank you.
The opportunity to speak to the board is provided for members of the public who have a comment to make about the business of the board. The board appreciates hearing from stakeholders and values your thoughts and questions. The board strives to make the best decisions for the village, and public input is very helpful. The board must protect the civility and decorum of this meeting. Please be respectful of the duties of the board and the democratic process in your comments tonight. Please state your name and address your comments to the board. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Please be factual and courteous, and the board requests you do not make statements that are personally disrespectful or condescending to members of the board or staff. To the extent multiple speakers are addressing a single issue, the mayor reserves the right to limit the number of speakers making public comment of a repetitive nature and/or limit the amount of time for public comment. The board does not respond to comments or attempt to answer questions during the public comment period. And first, we have Tim Hill.
My name is Tim Hill. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board members. We are here as part of the Teamster Horseman Motorcycle Association. And I just wanted to offer our thanks. We've really, we started off on the wrong foot, and we are, we worked really hard with the village to make sure that we are in line. And hopefully, everything has gone well, and hopefully, you're happy with that. We just wanted to thank you for all the help, for all the work that you guys have done to welcome us here. Secondarily, this Saturday is our annual Teamster Horseman Heroes Ride, benefiting the VFW, our local VFW, Post four five five one in Antioch. All veterans, all citizens really are allowed, are welcome. All veterans will be given free dinner and about a hundred and fifty handshakes. So all of you are also welcome. We'll be back from our actual ride around three. So if you want Japanese whiskey or something of that nature, feel free to stop by. And again, thank you very much.
Round four. Thank you. Thank you. I saw a couple of people walk in. If you do want to, if there's anybody else that wants to be added to the list for public comment, raise your hand. We'll, we'll add you in a moment. Okay. Next, Madam Clerk.
Pam Mosin. My name is Pam Mosin. I live at two fifty-eight Lakewood Drive. I'm commenting on the dispensary that you're talking about putting on Main Street. Mr. Sunday has talked with the neighbors there, and he's been working with us, which I really appreciate. All that we ask is, at the very end, about the lighting and the fencing. If we can have something to say on that, just to make sure it kind of protects the property in case anything ever happens to have it there and they run into our backyard. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Darcy DuSault, and I live at two five two Lakewood Drive. And I've been a resident there for forty-one years. I also manage and own Hearts at Home Daycare for thirty years. And I too would like to make a comment about the dispensary that's going to be put, that butts up to our property and adjacent to our property. I appreciate Troy Sunday's business aspect and his professionalism and his neighbor, that he's been very considerate of our wishes in putting in, granting us a berm for our continued privacy that we've been spoiled with for the last forty-one years. And also, I would like to agree too, that we would like to make sure that we continue to have our protection as residents on Lakewood Drive and as far as the other neighbors there. And also concern about the fencing and the lighting that may affect us in the future.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming and speaking tonight. We have one item on the consent agenda, which I assume does not need to be removed, so I entertain a motion and a second to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Motion trustee Bluthart.
Second.
Second trustee Berman, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries on to the regular business. Consideration and approval of payments of accounts payable as prepared by staff, the amount of three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance adding one more class F liquor license for Teamster Horsemen, Chapter twenty-five North, located at eight ninety-four Anita Avenue. Ordinance number twenty-three dash seven dash fourteen, and entertain a motion, a second waving, the second reading. Motion trustee Masek.
Second.
Second trustee Bluthart, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 I didn't hear you, I'm sorry. I.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance amending section ten dash nineteen dash thirteen of the Village Code regarding the number of recreational cannabis dispensing organization licenses allowed in the village of Antioch, Illinois. Ordinance number twenty-three dash zero seven dash fifteen, do I have a motion and a second? So moved. Waving the second reading, I'm sorry.
So moved, waving the second reading.
Second.
Motion trustee Bluthart, second trustee Peterson, any further discussion on this item? Right, roll call, please.
Wait.
No.
Yes.
Wait a second, what are we? Which one are we voting on?
This is for the additional license, so from one to two.
I thought Mike was getting up there to do a presentation and talk about it and.
Um, I, no, I just had, I think more for discussion purposes, if there are questions or discussion.
I do have discussion.
Okay, go ahead, trustee Pierce.
First of all, I just want to just say my piece one more time, because everybody knows I'm against increasing the number, and I was against having these at all. It's, it's becoming quite apparent, and this is just my opinion, that if somebody comes to us and says they're going to give us money, that we're going to pass whatever they want passed, whether it's good for the village or not good for the village. I personally don't believe this is good for the village. I know others do, but I do not believe it's good for the village. And if we're changing the number of pot licenses or marijuana licenses for dispensaries, why are we not changing the number of liquor licenses? In fact, we should just remove any numbers for liquor licenses and any numbers for dispensaries, because it's whoever comes forward. So I will be a no vote on this.
I'm gonna make a comment.
Yeah, hold on one second, let me confer with the village attorney. I'm going to go through the trustees first. Anybody down here want to comment?
My only concern is, is we already started voting, and now we're going back. So as long as we clarify that.
Yeah, it's. Because, you know, we are in a, right? Because we are, you know, it's a new era for Robert's rules. Robert's rules was going to run for about a hundred and fifty years, and we've only had video conferencing for a much shorter period of time. So trustee Pierce, obviously, the, for any substantive motion, which is the least presidential motions under Robert rule, you have the ability to speak and comment and debate. Trustee Pierce made that, and there is obviously some time lags as it relates to transmissions rather than in person. So I don't, I mean, yeah, I mean, you can withdraw your vote. I mean, for the record, yeah, we'll just, we'll recall the role after discussion, because I'm not saying we jumped the gun, but trustee Pierce has a right to speak. Trustee Pierce is exercising that right. Now, the other board members want to speak as well, and I believe even some members of the public want to speak.
Yeah. All right, trustee Masek, I think I see between his hand, I see it, gentleman. Okay. Gentleman and from the public, so go trustee Masek.
Yeah, there's no such thing as a limited number of liquor licenses. And I agree, we should have one insurance office in town. It should be me. We should have one attorney license in town. It should be, should be the mayor. I mean, this is the craziest thing of no free enterprise. I've never heard of anything such crazy. Competition's good, but let's vote tonight on one insurance license just for me. Throw everybody else out of this town. Let's, let's vote tonight on one law office for, for, for Mr. Gardner, the mayor. What, it's insanity to sit there and say, we're not going to give competition. The law says it's legal to drink a beer. Our job is to regulate on how that is, that liquor license is given. The law, the law in the state of Illinois is for, for cannabis, allowed to smoke now. It's how we distribute those licenses, not a license, it's licenses. One could be for recreational, and the other shop may want to just distribute the medical. To each his own, but to sit there and say, we're not going to have fair competition, insanity. If someone is, and this is, I've been thinking about this, if someone sits up on this board and says, I'm an alcoholic, can they vote on a liquor license? Do they get to sit in the audience and recuse himself? Because I sat here when we had votes and I had a conflict of interest with the rivalry, and I had to sit down on the floor because I couldn't vote because I had the insurance. And I, and I was forced to get off the dais and sit on the floor. So if someone's an alcoholic, they shouldn't be voting on liquor licenses. Someone says, I got a moral issue. I don't believe in marijuana. It's not what the law says. The law says you have to regulate as a trustee. I don't care if you got a moral issue. I got a moral issue, I don't drink, I'm an alcoholic. Maybe you should recuse yourself, sit down on the floor. I was forced off the floor on the rivalry five times. Five times I was off this dais, because one member of this board says, I shouldn't be up here. I could have shut my mouth, I didn't open my mouth to give them two hundred thousand dollars. But I was forced to sit in the back of the room. We're here to regulate state law. And to give the people licenses and free enterprise is part of America. The gosh darn freedom we're given. So that's, that's, if you guys want to vote for one, vote for one insurance office in town. Vote for one attorney's office in town. Vote for one restaurant, so everybody lines up. Insanity.
Right, I believe trustee Berman, which scales? Okay, so I'll let you, give you an opportunity after trustee Berman.
Okay, um, so they're at the planning and zoning board meeting on, I believe it was April fifth. There was discussion on a consideration of a tax amendment to, to specific sections to prohibit cannabis lounges. But I don't ever recall that coming before this board to discuss, and I think that that's something that needed to be discussed before getting to the point we're at today in voting on these items.
Yeah, I mean, that's a good, I mean, I understand your point, trustee. Obviously, we are here with regards to the two issues of licensure. We did look into the issues relative to lounges. There is an aspect of this that's moot, because I don't believe that either one of the two people who have forwarded their applications are looking for lounges. They have affirmatively said, and then their business licenses will say they will not have lounges. They will be dispensary. They will, people will walk up, and it's a very regulated industry. People walk up, they will buy, and they will leave, or they will elect not to buy. I understand it is a, it's, I'm not saying it's premature, I'm not saying, obviously. But the motion on the floor is for the two.
Right.
And then, just so you know, for your protections on that, their business license, when they make application, will say there will not be a dispense or a lounge at there, so that will not be going on. They would change their special use. So right now, all dispensaries require a special use. In their special use application, they said that there wasn't going to be any onsite consumption. As such, and can I, Mr. Garrigan, I am sure agrees with me. If you go in and make that type of a material change to a special use permit, dramatically changing how the business operates, that use is not the same use that was vetted for the zoning, planning and zoning board, nor vetted before this. I'm sure I'm not putting him on the spot, but I know he agrees. I mean, Mr. Garrigan, do you agree? I mean.
Yes, I completely concur. That would not be consistent with the special use. And as Mr. Counsel says, the applicant has made it quite clear on the record that they have, both applicants have no intent and or interest in opening a consumption lounge.
Thank you. You hear us? Yep, I'll come back. One individual's approaching the dais, trustee Pierce, and I'll go back around again.
Jeff Scales for.
You're too tall, you gotta raise.
So I'm Jeff Scales. I've come before you guys before with my partner Zach, and we actually have the special use license for five-ten Main Street to open a cannabis dispensary there. Unfortunately, the location didn't work for us, it became cost prohibitive. I'd actually tell you, we came to this town because we got a call from Mr. Garrigan asking us to come and open a dispensary. Our first question was, is how many dispensaries are you going to allow? The answer was one. There was one, one dispensary is why we came here, why we invested our time, why we invested our money to come and, you know, become a part of Antioch. The idea that this is a free market, and, you know, as you said, only one lawyer, only one restaurant, only, you know. Illinois has limited the amount of licenses that they're going to release. There's only five hundred of them. There's thousands of lawyers, there's thousands of restaurants. There's only five hundred licenses that Illinois has decided to release for this state. They've seen what happens in other states. They've seen what happened in California, in Colorado, in Michigan. And the over kind of population of dispensaries kills them. I mean, I believe Mr. Weber is here, who is also applying for the special use for cannabis dispensary here. You'll admit that in Michigan, dispensaries are closing now because of overpopulation in certain towns. I mean, this is, if you guys are going to allow, I mean, we came to this town because they're supposed to be one dispenser. If you're going to allow two dispensaries, we're, it doesn't work that way. I mean, I don't believe that they could, this town can financially support two dispensaries. And I guess that's my comment so far.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I know trustee Pierce set his hand up, and then give the trustees another opportunity if they so choose, and then hopefully call the vote again. Justie Pierce, can you hear me?
I can hear you. First of all, I want to state for the record, I may drink three or four beers or a drink a year. So any implication that I may be an alcoholic is offensive, first of all. Second of all, we regulate, whether we like it or not, everything in America. And we regulate the number of stores that have cigarette licenses. We regulate who has vaping licenses. We regulate who, who can gamble and how many machines they can have. We can regulate alcohol and how many licenses there are. We regulate everything that happens in America. And it may be that we all want to be libertarians and say, I just want one, or I want everything. But the point is, and my point is, whoever comes before this board gets what they want, as long as they say they have money, or they're willing to spend money on certain individuals. And trustee Masek, when he was sitting down during the rivalry discussions, was doing so because he had insurance involvement in that business. It may or may not be right. He wasn't personally profiting at the rivalry, but he was, by law, had to sit down. I apologize to him if he's offended about that. But we regulate and we control numbers. I don't think we should have any. And I have a right, whether it's moral or not moral, or how I feel, to speak my mind and say how I'm going to vote. I don't approve of the marijuana dispensaries, and I'm going to vote against it. I've been consistent on this. Others have been consistent that they're going to vote yes no matter what. And my concern is the village of Antioch, and that's what I'm voting on, not business, not cash, not money. Other people have different opinions, and they can vote however they want to. But to imply that I'm an alcoholic or go after me in any manner like that is offensive, and I object.
All right, I appreciate that, trustee Pierce. Let's take any more comments that relate to the law and the licenses and avoid any personal references on this round of going around. Any, yeah, you're not trustee.
No. Mr. Vasselli. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just, and I know Mr. Scales, and I'm not trying to be semantic about this. There, and I'm sure he'd agree with me, I'm sure Mr. Garrigan would agree with me. I believe a comment was made, something like, that's not right. There's nothing that prohibits us from having two licenses here, right? It's not a legal issue, it's, it's a policy decision. It's a, how much do you think the market will bear out? It's not, there is no law that says the village of Antioch can only have one from the state. I just want to make that clear, so the board is not ill-informed about that.
Any other discussion?
Just nice, just one comment.
About the licenses?
Just the licenses.
Yes, thank you.
So I think it's the first one comes in, wins the game. The second one comes in, maybe not, maybe won't win, because financially it won't work for the second guy. So they're going to see, first guy's going to have the clientele, and, and the second guy's going to sit there and go, man, I got the best, first guy's got the best, I mean, most beautiful place in Lake County. The second guy's going to put, put a place in that's maybe second rate. He's not going to win it. And, you know, Antioch's got probably sixty thousand people coming to Antioch during the boat season. But the first guy, if his shop is number one, fantastic. Yeah, and, and for someone that doesn't think, I just lost a dear friend, the brain cancer. And, you know, the medical part of that side, it's, to me, it's important, because people can't get as easily their narcotics from their doctor. It's getting too regulated with the lawsuits. Physicians want to give out this before they want to get in trouble with the, with the government, so. You got to pick what's good for the people. Let the people make the choice what they want to do. I feel what you're saying. I feel what you're saying, but I think if you build a Taj Mahal, you win. The other person that builds a shack ain't going to win.
All right, any discussion, roll call, ready? All right, roll call, please.
I'm sorry, I'm confused now.
So we're the same vote on the, going from one to two.
Okay, sorry. No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Four voting yes, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consideration and approval of an ordinance granting a variance to allow a recreational cannabis dispensing organization at four fifty-three, permanent, four seventy-one temporary, Main Street, Antioch, Illinois, not to exist simultaneously. I would entertain a motion and a second waving the second reading.
So moved.
Waving the second reading. Motion trustee Bluthart. Second trustee Peterson, any discussion on this item?
Yes, for me.
Okay, trustee Pierce.
I'm waiting for the other trustee, but I wanted to get in.
Okay, anyone on this end?
Not at this time.
I'm just going to say again, you know, I, I have spoken with some residents, and they, they're not very crazy about the idea of putting these moving, having this such, having a dispensary that close to children. So I just want to put that out there, and that's all I'm going to say.
All right, thank you. I think trustee Pierce, you're next.
Um, all right, I was hoping to hear from Brent and them, but that's okay. On this subject here of the four seventy-one, line, item number five, temporary and permanent. Number one, I appreciate the residents of Lakewood that came forward and spoke about how nice Mr. Sunday has been and how answering to his questions he's been, or to their questions. But I spent a lot of time, we're developing this ordinance, discussing distances and how far away. And there was a lot of intent not to have them build this close to the residents or, or to, I'm sorry, childcare facilities, schools, parks, whatever. So on the distance issue, I object to this. I think it's too close. It's according to the paperwork, seven hundred feet. It's not a question of whether it's nine hundred and ninety-nine feet or eight hundred and fifty feet, or, I mean, we're, we're, we're getting down to almost halfway down, or three quarters of the way from, or three quarters of the distance from the site. So on the dispense and to a childcare facility, I would object to this, and I think the safety of our children is paramount over money and people, people having access to, to their, their, their preferred choice of enjoyment. The other issue I have with this, as I look at the paperwork, it states in there, you have the dispensary building, and right next to it, you have a future use, future business. And then the paperwork also says, oh, and for a lounge or for a bar, you need at least sixteen spaces, and there will be sixteen extra spaces available. So who are they fooling? That they're not going to, at some point, have somebody come before us and say, hmm, let's put a lounge there or a bar? We're opening up the distances on this to lounges, and if you get a lounge there, it's going to be even more problems. I think this is premature. I don't think we're in the spirit of what this was approved for, and I think that they're hoodwinking some people. So I will vote no on this also.
All right. Trustee basic.
So I'm going to ask the chief to arrest me right now, because I'm probably in the next two years going to commit a crime, because this is the silliest conversation. We've got a Starbucks next to a house that, that house was offered to be bought, by the way. But you've got a main drag, and I lived on, in Heron Harbor on Heron Drive, that I thought for sure before the forest preserve was going to buy that whole property. There's going to be a moose that's going to be built there, and I'm just going to be stuck with it. But no, the forest preserve saved that whole subdivision. You know, there's, there's trees and, and far enough, and, and I've been to a dispensary once, because I, in Colorado, which, Denver, which is full of flies, I could never imagine living there. But I went in one, and you're allowed, what? I think they had, you're allowed two, three people at one time in the dispensary, because they've got, they've got, they don't, they got guards in front of it. So it's not like you've got a packed house of people going in the place. So I went in there for research, and I would love to sell, sell this stuff, because it'd be, I'd have fun selling. So I went in there for research and I would love to sell this, sell this stuff because it'd be, I'd have fun selling. What ails you? I got this stuff. It's the green stuff that'll fix you. But, because I don't do this stuff, but. The point is, you build barriers, you build like Pam Ozen said, the lights, we'd protect Oakland knows with the lights. I don't even know if people would even know it's there. It'd be quiet. Um, I, the, the places I went in Denver, you don't even know they're in the back, they're, they're, they're in streets. You'd, you'd pass them five times before you know they're there. The only reason you know they're there is signage. Um, and, and, and we, 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 we've talked about the ordinance on signages. That we wouldn't have signages that says, hey, we got a pot farm right here. Stop at our park. So we, we took care of that in prior, prior conversations. So, I mean, it's eighty-three, it's a corridor, it's a commercial corridor. Um, Oakland knows is farm field over. They don't protect eighty-three. If Oakland knows wants to buy that property from Troy Sunday, make an offer tonight. So i- it, another, another, another conversation that I just don't understand tonight. I'm in a bad mood tonight, by the way.
Of course, anything here? Alright, back to this side.
Just, um, briefly, I just wanted to say that I did listen to all the residents. I watched the planning and zoning meeting. So I do appreciate the concerns with safety with children and the distance. So I really did take that to heart. I researched, slept on this and I keep thinking it over and over again in my head and I'm a mom too. Um, but over and over again, I'm not finding any compelling data that there are safety issues with the dispensaries. I'm not seeing data trending to increase crime or, you know, harming children or anything like that. If there was, I would be the first to vote no on it, but the difference in, in the feat, I'm not finding data to support that. And also when I learned that other towns have done smaller distances, I just feel like between the setback that. It will be plus with the, the berm and the fence and the landscaping. I think it will give a nice buffer and hopefully security, you know, to the daycare. I thought like, if I was a mom, would I send my child to, um. Mr. Sal's daycare and I thought, yes, I would because they're going to have security there during the day. There's a fence at night. Um, there's separation. It's not like there's access into the neighborhood. So it is a really tough decision. I don't want anyone to think that I'm. You know, haven't thought about this or don't care about children because I do. But after reviewing all of the evidence and arguments both ways, I, I just think it makes sense for the town to have it. I don't think that that. Difference is going to, to create a safety issue. So that's all I wanted to say. It's just that I did, I'm a mom and I thought about it and I do care, but I still think it's the best for the town. So.
Yep, trustee Berman.
Um, as far as the signage, now that if, if this does pass and it's less than a thousand feet. What, how does that affect, uh, the signs for businesses? Or, or does it not affect it?
I don't know, I'd say either you or Michael.
Um, I'm probably going to ask Michael to chime in, but the signage for cannabis dispensaries is regulated by the state primarily. Um, if you look, if you pass them, you've seen there's not, you can't, if I remember correctly. You cannot put a cannabis leaf on there. Um, and I believe that there's other regulations that are strictly on there, um. That would supersede it. Obviously, we are not a home rule unit. Um, we are limited in our jurisdiction on this. And I'll ask Michael to chime in, but it's a state regulated thing. So it's not like if your concern is there'll be a big marijuana cannabis leaf or. I don't even know what it is. I apologize. But on the front door of the signage, they, it's just, they can't do it.
So as you know, our, our sign permits are administrative review. So when the applicants come in, assuming they are approved. Um, we will review the signage, make sure it's, uh, compliant with all state statutes and our local ordinances.
Any other questions or discussion? Going once, going twice. Alright, roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Nay.
Mason?
Yes.
Peterson? Yes.
Alright, for voting yes, motion carries. Next is consideration and approval of an ordinance granting a variance to allow a recreational cannabis dispensing. Organization at four seventeen. Route one seventy-three, suites one oh six and one oh seven, Antioch, Illinois. Orders number twenty-three dash oh seven dash seventeen, who have a motion and a second waving the second reading.
So I'm waving second reading.
Second, motion trustee, uh, Peterson, second trustee Boothard. Uh, do we need discussion on this one? Alright, roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, for voting yes, motion carries. Um, next is consideration and approval of an ordinance granting land use relief for the property located at four fifty-three. Main Street, Antioch, Illinois, special use permit. Dash cannabis dispensary ordinance number twenty-three dash oh seven dash eighteen, do I have a motion on the second waving the second reading?
So moved, waving the second reading.
Motion trustee Boothard.
Second.
Second, uh, trustee Peterson, any discussion?
I do.
Alright, roll.
Uh, I do.
Yep, go ahead Scott.
Can we have the attorney explain what land use relief is? I, this is the first time in twenty-two years I've seen this on a, on an agenda.
Um, land use relief is an industry term that talks about any type of relief that's sought by a, a petitioner before a body. It could be subdivision, it could be, um, special use permits, it could be variances, it could be tax amendments, it could be rezonings. So it's a common term used in the industry. I'm sure Mr. Garrigan would agree with it. Sometimes they're referred to land use adjustments. Sometimes they're, they're called boards of land use relief or boards of land use adjustments. So, um. It is a common term that's used in the industry and by lawyers who practice in the industry.
Can you explain what land relief is on each one of these, these votes we're going to be taking?
Yes.
Specific relief they're searching for?
Sure, um, mayor, with your approval, can I go through each one of them all at once?
Yeah, they're, they're both items. So items, you're talking about items, um, seven, eight, nine, yep.
Just to expedite, trustee Pierce, if you're okay, I'll address all.
Fine, I, I just wanted to know what their relief they're looking for.
So what they're looking for is special use permits. So again, um, there are two types of uses that are permitted. And under zoning law, essentially in the state of Illinois and in our village. There are permitted uses, which is by right use. If you are in that district, you ask for that use, you can do it. Then there are special uses. Now there's a differing of opinion about how the special uses are treated, whether they are allowed with conditions or they can be denied, but that's neither here nor there at this point. For our purposes, these are the uses that can come in, provided there's a vote. And then this board, following the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, can attach a, conditions on them. If the owner or applicant, let's re, let me rephrase, if the applicant or petitioner comes in and says, we do not want those conditions. It will not go forward. The special use is a quasi-public use or a use. That is generally of a nature that merits conditions. For example, in many communities, drive-throughs are special uses in every instance. So it's those types of uses that are a little, I don't want to say abnormal, but they are consistent with the character of the community. Meeting the Euclidean zoning type of task, that these are the type of things that go there. But these uses are things that we're going to examine. And we're going to determine what conditions need to go on these uses for them to be viable in the community. So what we've got here, it's kind of a unique situation. We have three special use permits. These, uh, I'll go, make my life easy. The simple one is Mr. Scales is, um, it's two eighty LLC, two eighty E LLC. And that is a special use permit to allow for the sighting of a dispensary. Um, provided state approval comes through, um, in the wall, what's? Or the.
Walmart.
In front of Walmart, between Walmart and Home Depot. Oh, I'm sorry, Menards, sorry, sorry, Menards.
You want from Menards here?
Right, yeah. Sorry about that. Um, Menards, so but in that, uh, retail center. And the other one is, uh, in the area of. A Main Street at four fifty-three and four seventy-one. The reason that these are on there and no, these two will never exist at the same time. It was talked about ad nauseam at the petition. It is clear in the special use requests and the conditions they're on. They will never, they will never exist at the same time. But this petitioner says that they can get a temporary site up. With state approval, and then they will close out that site before they move into their permanent location. These are essentially, again, I messed up Menards and Home Depot, so I apologize, but they're essentially neighboring properties. It's four fifty-three and four seventy-one. So that, those are the, and those are both special uses because the code, which respectfully, you were more familiar with Diane, you were there when it passed. You and that village board and the corporate authorities at that point in time required all of these uses to go through as special use permits. Which is the land use relief that they're requesting at this point in time. Mike, do you have anything to add or no?
So, so essentially, so essentially, so essentially.
They've got all that, that, no legal lease in there at all.
So essentially.
Scott, sorry.
That educational, uh, synopsis, which I really do appreciate. The relief the board is providing is allowing them to put, uh, their dispensaries on that location.
With the conditions, with conditions. They are both conditioned, they're both heavily conditioned, to be honest. They're both, um, so yes, trustee. Is the relief to allow them to put that on there as a special use? And they have to adhere to those conditions to can, to start and can, continue to operate that special use.
It, in the light of, um, in light of having you explain what all those special conditions are and having everybody go to sleep on us. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll yield the floor.
Okay, any other discussion items on this? Alright, um, I'm going to call item number seven. Uh, there's a motion, a second on the floor. This is related to, um, special use for four fifty-three Main Street.
Actually, can I, can I ask one more quick question? Just to make sure.
Just don't vote yet because then we'll.
No.
Alright.
Okay, um. So this, this does contain, also contain a, a variance, right, within this or, or no?
No, that's a great question. So under land use law, and again, I apologize, there are different types of relief that we get. We could have a rezoning or a tax amendment. So let's not, we're not talking about those tonight. A variance means that we are varying from the strict dictates of the code. Like the thousand feet, we're not going to have a thousand feet, for example, like what we did earlier. But the special use permit is a use and it says, we can go into this use. It has to be voted on and the conditions have to be appended. So they're all like cousins to one another. They're all in the same family of land use adjustments or relief. But they're a little bit different and this comes into how you can use a property and what conditions can be appended to it. It becomes a little confusing here because we have, we, to protect the village. We have attended similar and interrelated conditions on the variances in the special use permits. So for example, if the special use permit fails, even though the variance passed, then the variance, we put a condition on there that says it doesn't go forward. Because why do they need a variance? It's not going to have a special use permit.
Okay.
So just to be a little bit more confusing about this, if I can be, they're all different types of ways. That we can operate with land use as a governing body. In this one, it's, is this use okay? So you either have a, a permitted use or a special use. These are all special uses and with these special uses, they get voted on. And we can attach conditions there too. It's a little different than a variance, which says, let me make this easier. You can only have fifty feet buildings in the village, okay? You can vary that and say sixty. A use is just that. It's a use. Can you do this use or not? Does that help? And the variance was approved.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that, and, okay, so. And that variance was for, how?
How far the buffer goes. From the daycare.
Okay, so that was, what?
Yeah.
Right, and that one was, was that seven hundred or was that a thousand?
No, there's no, we do not have.
There was not, there wasn't, okay. Okay, sorry.
No, he's like, no, I love zoning law. I really do. So I get really nerdy about it. I apologize.
Alright.
I'm going to add something. Oh, oh, sorry. I want, I'm sorry. I want to make something clear and I think it is of a concern. If you read our conditions, it still has to meet. And I just want to make sure we're clear. So the board knows the other steps that have to go through on this. It still has to be approved, compliance with the village engineer, and that will be for all the special uses and the Antioch Fire Protection District. And if the state, for some reason, and I am not a cannabis lawyer, but if the state, for some reason, doesn't give them a license. Then there's no special use. It just ends. It's, it's over. We have attended, and we've talked about this, sunset provisions. That they've got to have site plan approval within thirty, uh, within three months. And then they've got to have certificate occupancy for building within six months. So you can't just sit on it. You can't bank your license. So trustee, very long-winded way of saying, there are a ton of different ways you can adjust and do land use matters. And what we're voting on here tonight, can we use this use and are the conditions that we're putting on this use there appropriate? Mike, is that?
Yes, absolutely. That's consistent, consistent with the discussions. As you know, there are extensive discussions at the planning commission. So each of these stipulations were basically conditions which were really reflected, the extensive discussions at the planning commission. So that, that really reflects the stipulations.
Alright. Roll call, please.
Berman?
I'm going to vote no.
Yes.
Yes.
Derek?
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Right, for voting yes, motion carries, item number eight. Consideration and approval of an ordinance granting land use relief for the property located at four seventy-one Main Street, Antioch, Illinois. Special use permit cannabis dispensary ordinance number twenty-three dash oh seven dash nineteen. Uh, motion in the second, waving the second reading, please. Motion trustee Mason, second, second trustee Boothard, any discussion? Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
For voting yes, motion carries. Last item on this agenda for vote is consideration and approval. Of an ordinance granting land use relief for the property located at four seventeen East Route one seventy-three, suites one oh six and one oh seven. Antioch, Illinois, special use permit cannabis dispensary ordinance number twenty-three dash oh seven dash twenty. Do I have a motion and a second waving the second reading? Waving the second reading?
Yes.
Motion trustee Mason, second trustee McNeil, discussion? Roll call, please.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
For voting yes, uh, motion carries. Alright, next item on the agenda is the administrator's report.
Thank you, your honor. Um, I've attended a, a number of meetings over the last couple of weeks. Um, so I'll just kind of give you a breakdown and give you a little synopsis of some of that. The mayor, uh, kind of stole the thunder on the start of construction across the street here, so thank you. The clarifier project proceeds. They are now, I believe, installing, uh, the base stone under the slab, preparing the subgrade. They had to remove some stone. That was contaminated with soil and sludge. After that stone is installed, they'll begin warming the, um, it'll begin rebar steel installation and then. They'll pour the concrete. Work on that continues. Um, I've attended a, a meeting with, um, our public works planning team and, and the mayor and I. And then, and I'm not sure who else, but we're going to go tour a couple of facilities to gain some insights. As to what public works facilities, you know, what's trending, what is working well, what is not. So I think we're scheduled to visit the two or three next Tuesday and then we'll report back. Um, I'm, I'm hoping sometime in the next couple of meetings to have, um, some renderings for you. As to what the, the, both buildings, the, the village hall and the, and the, um, public works may look like. We're just, we're, we're almost there. Um, so I'm, I'm looking forward to sharing that with you and getting your input. Um, there was, we attended a meeting with Rotary. Um, the Rotary is going to help us, um, sponsor trash collection and recycling. Or primarily recycling at the park. They want to kind of start a program where, um, they, they are offering some kind of financial support. To perhaps upgrade the receptacles there to allow, um, some recycling. I thought it was a very good idea. So those discussions will continue. We don't have exact models or what it looks like or what, how the program will work, but wanted you to know about that. Um, I also met with the Lions Club at Williams Park. The Lions want to do, um, some projects to improve the look of the, the primary shelter there. Uh, the standard oil building, which is a storage building, which they are leasing for storage for mostly the barbecue supplies and other supplies that they have. When they do events at, uh, Williams Park. Um, so, um, they are not asking for any financial assistance, um, from us. Uh, we, we are only asking of them that they don't interfere with activities and rentals and things that are planned in the park. So I'm looking forward to seeing that facility upgraded.
Uh, just one quick question on that. Sure. Your honor. The, the, if they're doing work over there, are they required to get a permit? And if they're required to get a permit, do we need to, uh, waive those fees? And if they're required to get a permit, do we need to, uh, waive those fees?
Um, ye- yes, they are required to get a permit, um, certainly to do, you know, roofing, which they are doing on both buildings. Um, they are aware of that, um, but yeah, we should probably put an item on an agenda to waive those fees.
Thank you.
For board's consideration of that.
Thank you.
I did take a trip up to, uh, Breezy Hill to select the stone, the size, the shapes of, of the different stones that are being placed in the park. Um, they actually created a palette, and they brought all the different stones out and used the machines to pile them up and how they would look together. Um, and, uh, our, our contractor was there, our, um, landscape architect was there. Um, it, it looks really good. Um, the, the creek channel will have kind of a, a bluish gray. Uh, even some purple mixed into essentially round stone, and we're, we're gonna go with a, a larger size, so it doesn't travel when the water, um, has velocity. Um, the, um, this, the, I, I guess it's called the outcropping stone. And you've seen pictures of that, we discussed it a little bit, um. Samples of that were spot on exactly what they were showing in renderings, they look really good, they're very large, very heavy. Um, I forgot the number of truckloads of that that are coming, but there's, there's a lot of it. So, that, that one looked good, and I also had the stone um, that's gonna be on the bridge and the head walls in the building to compare how they would all look together, even with some of the pavers in the blue stone, so all I can say is, it's, it's very impressive, that all looks very good, the planning process, I think, worked and um, all of those materials are being sourced and, um, uh, purchased or, or P O's are being ordered, okay? Um. You'll, you'll be interested in this. We were approached by the Clublands developer, Mr. Mertz, um, to plat phase four of the Clublands. It was never, i- it, it was approved by the village, I think seventeen years ago. Um, I believe there are ordinances, but it was never, um, recorded. And there was a provision in the, in the agreements or P U D that if the subdivision didn't get recorded in the timeframe, I believe it was six months or four months or something like that, that it would be completely null and void. Um, that developer is trying to begin the process for reapproval of Clublands Phase Four. Um, I don't remember how many units, about three hundred? Or four hundred and fifty-three units. Um, it's all that property um, north of Miller Road and basically south of Homer White Lake. Um, fairly large development, I will be, it, it will be coming to you, it wa- most likely will be going through planning and zoning for full approval. Um. So I, I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that, that's we've been approached on that. Um, I've attended, uh, CENTCOM meetings and furthered discussion about the nine-one-one consolidation, there was a groundbreaking. Uh, I believe Jim Moran attended, they broke ground in Libertyville for the new, I believe they're calling it The Rock. The Rock, which is a massive nine-one-one dispatch center, uh, which in about a year and a, year and a half or so time, we will be migrating and all of, not all, most vast majority of dispatch centers will consolidate and migrate to this larger center. Um. I just wanted to give you a, a little update, we pivoted a bit on the North Avenue crossing. This is the quiet zone upgrades required to that grade crossing to keep the quiet zone intact. Um, there's other communities than same spot we're in with costs way higher than anticipated. Um, so we're, we're pivoting, there, there was an option to, instead of tearing out the concrete barrier median and lengthening that um, to install delineators, and you may have seen them at crossings where you have a series of vertical, um, things that are bolted to the concrete that are, um, you know, that are reflective and and colorful, um, but they're intended to keep drivers from driving around the, um, gates. Um, they're significantly cheaper, we don't have to remove and pour concrete, they bolt to what's there. Um, I think Libertyville, Lake Villa, Round Lake, and we're gonna follow suit and, you know, switch gears from that concrete to these delineators. I think we're going from about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to maybe thirty thousand dollars, so there's a, a, a large cost savings to those. Um, our business development manager, Mark Searle, started Monday. Um, he's going through orientation, and we're including him in meetings, and he's, you know, getting to know how we, how we work, so that is proceeding well. And we have come to the end of interviews for the assistant administrator. Um, we started out with I think there were twelve or fifteen applicants. We interviewed four on the first round, three on the second round, and two on the third round. Um, and, um, we are, have not made any offers yet. Um, I, I, the, the person's current employer doesn't know at this point, so I'm not gonna say a name. Um, however, um, at least the, the mayor and I and village attorney um, were unanimous on who this person is. Um, she is, uh, very impressive, I think, I, I think she's gonna work out really well and fit in really well here, and I'm very much looking forward to onboarding. Um. As I said, we've, I have not negotiated any salaries at this point, um, we are beginning those. Uh, I'm expecting this position to be somewhere in the one twenties. What I'm hoping for. And that concludes the administrator's report, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Alright.
Just real quickly, just real quickly, a question, Jim. I, I didn't have a chance to ask, while you were talking about the delineators for the railroad track, how, how do we? You're just saying North Avenue, but if you look at like, uh, uh, Ida and, um, in eighty-three, are we gonna be doing that at those locations also, or, or is it just the North Avenue is the hot, railroad's concern?
Yeah, the, um, F R A and I C C have identified deficiencies at certain crossings throughout Lake County on the C N line. And North was one of them, the other crossings, um, were not deemed to be deficient. Um, you know, you know, so we, we are simply attempting to re-certify the quiet zone, so we're, we're just taking those steps necessary to accomplish that. Um, it doesn't, I, I, I don't believe it precludes us from installing delineators or safety measur- measures at other crossings, but that hasn't been, um, contemplated or required yet at this point.
Okay, thank you, and just a further update, uh, Ly- Linda Peterson, our county board member had, had rough crossing signs put on North Avenue and the Lake County, uh, Department of Transportation has contacted the, the railroad concerning the condition of North Avenue following their repairs.
Alright, but we're wondering where those signs came from, thank you, yeah.
Yep. Thank Linda.
Alright, thank you, Linda. Anything else? Thank you, Jim, um, next we have, uh, village clerk, any report? Alright, um, any, uh, we have two department reports, uh, community development, Mr. Garrigan.
Yes, thank you, your honor, as one of the advised board that we had a very, a positive meeting uh, with the developer, uh, for the Brown LLC, previously known, commonly known as a marketplace property. That's a proposed eighty-two acre mixed-use project, um, it appears that the traffic study um, has been completed and is, uh, will be submitted to I dot for review. That's obviously incredibly important, uh, for access, we're looking for potentially a full access on Brown Road. Potentially a full access, I'm thinking with signalization, so that's a very positive step. Once the completion of some I dot feedback, um, we're hoping that we'll see potentially, uh, a major development, approximately eight acres. Potential, potential entitlement of that project, potentially by early autumn. Um, uh, with potential development next year, moving dirt. Also working with John Green, which is a major, um, uh, commercial real estate company in Naperville. They have identified potentially some end users, commercial end users for that property. So we're very excited about that, um, we've worked with John Green's office for many years. Uh, also, excitingly, we have a, uh, proposed, a new landmark, uh, we anticipate a public hearing, uh, for the uh, our first landmark for Historic Preservation Commission, uh, public hearing in September. That, um, pub, that'll probably be referred to the village board for either a early October, uh, approval of our first landmark. We're also in the process of completing our, um, survey, I think we have approximately fifteen additional properties that have to be surveyed. And after almost two years, our, uh, urban survey will be completed. Um, it, it, again, it, it really extensive joint effort by the Historic Preservation Commission. Um, with regards to motor homes, I know Jim talked about phase four. I know there are some ex- expressed concerns about some of the product in, in phase three, so, um, staff has been working with the developer to add some additional new models to provide some additional architectural variety to that product itself. So we anticipate, um, those revised models, additional models come to staff or our review, uh, within the next month or so. Um, also working, you should see, hopefully, within the next month, month and a half or two months, potentially a conceptual, a new assisted living uh, concept, we, there's a real need, there's, as you all know, we have many ways, challenges for a kind of medical desert in Antioch, and also there's a real need for assisted living, uh, so perhaps we'll see our first, um, proposed assisted living facility um, in, in the Antioch, who are currently working with a developer who should be bringing in concepts before the board. Uh, I anticipate, again, next month, month and a half. Um, as it relates to staff, one of the things that we're currently working on, um, is I know there's been some, continue to express concerns about, uh, property maintenance with our new addition of our new code enforcement, um, um, officer, full-time. Uh, we look forward to, um, drafting some new, uh, regulations that relates property maintenance, especially, um, for commercial property maintenance. Um, and having that, um, probably for a future code meeting in the next several months to review that, those regulations, um, which will dovetail perfectly with our new full-time code enforcement person. Uh, and finally, um, we're, we, uh, did receive a facade grant for the property commonly known as nine-one-nine Main Street. Which is, again, our, in our historic downtown, um, staff is working with the applicant on that, on trying to revise, try to restore that building to its original historical integrity under our facade grant, so with that, I'll conclude my summary.
Alright, thank you, any questions? Alright, thank you, um. Police Chief Kutchow.
Good evening, everybody, uh, so last month, we had a pretty busy month, not unexpected for summer, we logged thirteen hundred and seventy-five incidents that we handled for the month of June. Uh, they managed to work in two hundred and thirty-one officiant-initiated traffic stops within that. Uh, we continue to see an elevated number of accidents for officers responding to calls that require crisis intervention. As you know, throughout the winter and spring, we hovered on an average of around ten per month, but we've seen a little bit of an uptick, uh, not uncommon for the warmer months. So for June, we logged fourteen cases that we reported at the state that involved individuals and not to health crisis that needed some sort of intervention or de-escalation. Uh, we handled about one thousand fifty hours of internal training as we continue to move towards our goal of providing our officers with some of the best training opportunities available to them within Lake County. Few meetings that were attended, Commander Smith, uh, Sergeant Bonner, I D and I attended a seminar last month where we heard a pretty interesting presentation that was put on by retired Aurora Police Chief Kristen Zeeman. If anyone's heard of her, she's a, she's kinda transitioned into the private sector and does a lot of, uh, leadership speaking. Um, this one, we kinda s- focused on the subject of empowering others through leadership. So it gave some kinda new perspective on how to approach things within the leadership realm while also seeking to help develop future leaders within the organization by exposing some of our sergeants to this type of opportunity. Last week, I attended a roundtable discussion that was hosted by Congressman Brad Schneider, uh, was for all the tenth congressional district police chiefs. Where we discussed a lot of the current challenges facing law enforcement within the tenth district, uh, was clear that departments, communities, both large and small, are all facing many of the same challenges. It was identified that some of the big challenges facing our area, our recruitment retention, which is something we've exi- uh, experienced locally, for sure. Uh, increases in crime, challenges in boat, in the prosecution of criminal offenders once they're apprehended. And then, of course, the fentanyl crisis, which is, uh, also plagued Lake County. I was excited to hear, though, a lot of the stories that, success stories from some of the communities in our area that have already implemented automated license plate reader programs. As you know, we're in the waiting process for state approval for the installation of five of these cameras in our community to help combat crime. Not only in our town, but also regionally through the sharing of data through this L P R information. Um, I was surprised at the number of cameras some of these, these towns have, uh, South Barrington, for example, is up to fifty-four of them. The police commission continues to advance its entry-level hiring recruitment process, interviews are scheduled for the last week of this month. As a reminder, we currently have two vacancies to fill. I'm happy to report that five of our current new officers are in their third phase of training now and progressing as we had hoped. We're thankful to have, hopeful to have them released from the field training by September, which is gonna bring much with needed relief for our officers who are working a ton of overtime to maintain our staffing levels. Want to make the board aware that a couple of weeks ago, I was approached by Superintendent Baroviac from District Thirty-four who expressed the district's interest in a potential full-time school resource officer to be based out of OGS, but to service all District Thirty-four schools. Uh, this afternoon, Administrator Kime and I met with district officials to kinda conceptually discuss, discuss this. Uh, next week, I've been invited to meet with the District Thirty-four Board of Education at their monthly meeting to discuss the matter further. And kinda make sure that my vision for what an S R O does aligns with what their vision and expectations would be. Uh, there's still a lot of details that need to be worked out before we move towards this, such as cost sharing, but I would anticipate any agreement would be very similar to what we currently have with District One Seventeen. Um, the one caveat to this, and, uh, the superintendent explained, was explained, and he understands that our current staffing would not be anything that we'd be able to fill immediately. It would require approval to add an additional headcount to the police department, uh, so that we could send one to the academy, and then at some point, move an experienced officer into that S R O position. As Mr. Garrigan mentioned, we are nearing the hiring of a code enforcement officer slash commute, full-time community service officer. Uh, the candidate that we've identified is our, is our frontrunner, is a former police officer with many years of experience which include exposure to code enforcement within a, within a small community. Uh, he has not yet notified his, his, uh, current employer of his intention to accept the position, so we're withholding his name. But we anticipate his onboarding sometime near September first. And lastly, I'd just like to share a couple of examples of some of the fantastic, our, op, work our officers are doing in our community, I think. You know, the board often sees some of the great work that they do related to police work. But oftentimes, officers are called to, to do things that are kinda outside of the realm of what the public would anticipate, I think. I think it's important for us to recognize and see what they do. Uh, one, one incident recently, one of our afternoon shift officers had noticed that someone ripped out all the, all the plants and flowers from the newly planted, uh, planters that are over by the farmer's market. Rather than simply write the report, notify Public Works the next day that repairs need to ma- be made, the entire afternoon shift assembled, rolled up their sleeves. Took the time to replant all the plants and flowers. This is a great example of the pride and service to the Antioch community that our officers have, and actions such as these indicate our officers care about the community. They wanna do their part beyond traditional policing to make sure that it's taken care of and looked after. A second incident during our recent fireworks display, one of our detectives who was assigned to patrol Williams Park during the event identified a registered predatory sex offender who was in the park. Who was seemingly blending in with the thousands of families who were just there to enjoy the Independence Day celebrations. The officer was able to safely contact and subsequently arrest the offender for violating conditions of the registration as a registered sex offender by being in a public park where children are present. I applaud Detective Courtney Nemec for her level of attentiveness and remaining familiar with potential threats to our most valuable resource, our kids. And taking swift action, action and decisive decisions to mitigate any potential danger this individual may oppose. And then lastly, I recently received a note from a citizen in the Clublands, who was the first on scene to a recent car-striking pedestrian. The resident was highly impressed with the officer's level of compassion in assisting a distraught driver of the vehicle who was experiencing emotional distress as a result of the accident. The resident commented the officer could have easily responded, completed the report, and sent the driver on his way. But rather, he stayed with the driver long after the incident to help console him. Officers consistently show this level of compassion, empathy within our community, and many, many people never had the opportunity to see this. I applaud the resident for taking the time to make sure I was aware of the positive interaction he observed, but I'd also like to rec- recognize Officer Charlie Schultz compassion he displayed, and for modeling that it is not how fast you handle a call, but rather the impacts you can make during your interactions with others that counts. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Alright, um, I also really dropped the ball on this at the beginning, I just wanna thank the police, public works, parks, especially administration, um, this is my, this is my first normal Fourth of July after COVID, and then Highland Park. And it's a long day, takes a lot of people, a lot of volunteers, I think forty-seven staff members coming in that day and giving out their holiday, so just, and board too, that's why I thank everybody for long, hot day and getting that done, so, thank you. Um, any trustee reports?
I do.
Alright, trustee, uh, Pierce.
Um, anybody else first?
I don't know.
Alright, first thing, first thing I wanna discuss is last, uh, All right. First thing, first thing I want to discuss is last meeting, we had a nice young lady come in in a wheelchair talking about accessibility and issues with accessibility within the village. I think the first step we could take is we have two parking spaces right next to the village hall that are reserved full time. I think they should be converted into a handicap van parking space so that somebody on a handicap van isn't fighting to get out and they're not tilting down into top street behind the building. I think that would be a perfect opportunity for us to show that we care deeply about our handicapped individuals. And then, once we do that, since we're soon to be flush with money, we hire an ADA consultant to come in and review the village and see what we can do to increase the accessibility and the, the the ease of life and the dignity of life in the village of Antioch for our, our, our handicapped and special needs individuals. I, I think those are two steps we can take immediately and to, 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 to start answering that, that, that nice lady's ask for help and, and a little bit more dignity. On top of that, Trustee Maisik had asked about painting speed limits on roads. I, I think that still needs to be considered and put forth in some of the neighborhoods, Oakwood Knowles, maybe, Popular, the Woods of Antioch, Heron Harbor, Tiffany. If it helps slow people down because they have a big visual sign that says what the speed limit is, maybe that, maybe that's some way that works. If we don't want to put speed humps in, maybe we can paint some speed humps so it looks like there's a speed hump so somebody slows down. I, I just don't see us moving forward on traffic safety enhancements as we should be. So I think we need to work on that. The last thing I'd like to see, I'll start looking at where we can post signs for sharing the road like North Avenue, the Orchard Depot. The roads within the village that when people ride their bikes, I think we need to start educating people to be aware of bike riders on there. I mean, when I'm riding my bike, nobody wants to hit me because it's going to make a big dent in their car. But other people need to feel safe when they're riding and we need to start educating people that bikes are on the road. That's, and just to follow up on what the mayor said and what the police chief said, not only, not only were there lots of employees on the Fourth of July, there were a lot of employees there all day long. They started when the sun came up and they, they finished when the fireworks finished and, oh, maybe they went a couple hours afterwards to help get things cleaned up and straightened out and cars out of the parking lots and stuff. The ones I saw, their faces were flushed, they were sunburnt, they were hot, and they were working for the village. So I think he is, the mayor was absolutely right in thanking them and telling them what a good job they did. So that's all I have here.
Thank you, trustee Pierce. Anyone else on trustee reports? Trustee Maisik?
Yes. I got a bunch of people to thank. So I, not to get in too much detail, my, my daughter had an anaphylaxis shock. My seven-year-old probably saved it, saved her life by calling the ambulance. Don't know how the heck he knew my address. He was, he was over visiting. Sergeant Jake Marsh did a fantastic job. Officer Christopher Smith, Officer Sean McMurray, dying chief Tim Taylor, the other paramedics, they, I was out golfing when it happened. I just wanted to give a shout out. Tim Taylor got on the phone with me and kind of gave me an update when I was golfing, keep me from worrying. Still, she's still in the, still in the hospital. But they were there pouring to my, her twin sister thirty seconds. So you see someone thank them because they, they, you know, I, I had to listen to them on the camera exactly what they said and, and they, they said, make sure, you know, make sure to watch out for the grandson, make sure. So they did a real good job. Tim Taylor high-fived my grandson, made sure he was okay. It's his mom, seven-year-old, it was very traumatic. So I just wanted to make, give a shout out for, for those, those folks that helped and everybody else. I, some of the people I don't recognize, I didn't, I couldn't get their faces on the cameras, recognize the people in the ambulance. So I apologize for anybody I missed on the fire department.
Thank you. All right. Any other reports? Any requests for executive session? Otherwise, I'd ask for a motion to adjourn the regular meeting for a brief break. Motion trustee Peterson?
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Six voting yes, motion carries, meeting adjourned at seven fifty-one. We'll take a five-minute recess. All right, calling the meeting to order at eight o'clock. This is the committee, the whole meeting. Roll call please.
Here.
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 Present, I suppose she's asking, I can't hear, she doesn't have a microphone.
Here.
Present.
Present. No mayor report, we do have one citizen that signed up to address the board. Mary, trustee Peterson, will you pass that to me? Thank you. All right, Madam Clerk. I don't think you need to.
I thank you for hearing me. I just have a couple of questions and a concern. In December, I moved my office into the strip mall on three eleven West Depot, which is the train station's parking lot. And I'm in the strip mall. And there've been a couple of issues with parking and clients, my clients and other clients along the strip mall not having any place to park during festivities. So who makes those decisions? The parking spots that are connected to the sidewalk are not public, they're part of the lease that we have. And so I, I just wanted to bring that to your attention and see if we can figure out what to do about that. Because we have, you know, Taste of Antioch happening tomorrow. So then bringing this concern because I, you know, need to figure out what to do.
Sure. And so typically in public comment, we don't go back and forth on this.
Okay.
I do, I think, remember we did receive an email one other time, I'm assuming from yourself. I'll check, no, I'll check with, there's, like you said, there's different ownership. Village owns the metro lot. The parking that you said is private. The landlord should probably put up some signs and, or towing. I think there was one time an issue where there was no access to the lot. So I know we got to be aware of that. We do have a traffic calming group, which maybe we bring this up at that committee, which is Public Works, Public Safety, and make sure that there's a plan that the businesses, those spots are reserved and for sure that there's access to the businesses, especially, you know, during business hours.
Okay. So for tomorrow, is there any way that I can have some cones set up or something like that so that people don't park there? And my clients don't have to walk from the pavilion, which was what happened on the Fourth of July?
I just am not sure if we could do it on the, you know, on the public property. Obviously, at some of our property, we probably could, but we'll have administrator, police chief and public works put our head together and see what we can do.
That's great. I really appreciate.
How many parking spots are typically needed to be reserved?
For therapists, eight.
Eight.
For me, and then we've got Marcy's Playground and we've got the dialysis and, you know, we've got a
Sure, okay.
You know, it's kind of
I will put our heads together on that.
Okay. And my other question is, who cleans up the next morning for the garbage? Because there's a lot.
Mary.
Mary does. Thank you.
That's also something that's probably discussed through, you know, the public works. Obviously, stuff that's on the private property is, you know, it could come from the public, not there for the private businesses. So we'll talk through that.
Right. It's just for the ceremonies and stuff because otherwise it's not a problem at all. So.
All right. Well, thank you for coming here and letting us know.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
We let, we love this much better than finding out on Facebook. So, thank you. All right. Do I have any a motion to approve the June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes? Motion trustee Maisik, second trustee Peterson, roll call please.
Yes.
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 Hi.
Yes.
Yes.
Six voting yes, motion carries onto the regular business. First item is liquor license discussion regarding its expanded sampling at gas stations. I believe Mr. Darney is on Zoom. I know he was here thirty days ago and we agreed to continue this discussion. For those of you who have been on the board for a long time, you've probably heard this discussion several times. So I, again, opening this up for Mr. Darney and then board discussion and, you know, figure out next steps one way or the other.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Yes. Okay. Hello, respected trustees and the mayor. So want to bring it back, the same thing after last month, the discussion we had. So want to have a expanded sampling for a gas station liquor license. So we can have the gaming. So as you guys are aware of it, like the gas station volume because of the, the state tax and the Lake County taxes, we are almost like fifty to sixty, seventy, something like seventy cents difference. And then we are all small business, small community, middle class. We always want to save on everything we can save on. And then I don't mind people driving over the border, but they want to save it, right? So, but we lost like seventy, seventy-five percent of our gas volume because of this. And then because of we are border town, we are most hit on the gas station. Any gas station in the border town is the worst hit by it. And we don't want to close it. We want to grow with Antioch. And we did spend a lot of money in expanding, make this place beautiful, renovated from the outside. And then we want to grow with Antioch. So we just want to like, we don't want like any financial assistance from the Antioch. Only thing is like, if we can change the Class D liquor license, that is for the gas stations, the same as the Class C liquor license, which has expanded sampling in there. So we can have a more tasting and then also can apply for gaming in the future.
All right. Thank you.
Any questions? I would like to address any question, any, any. And then the last thing I want to address is like, we do have a lottery, which is the Illinois Lottery, which is the same thing, is a gaming, is a kind of like a a gaming type, which is like, which is an old school, which is a scratch on, like it was a lottery. And it's just now the new thing is just a gaming, which is a view, same thing converted to a video screen. But it needs a separate licensing for that one. So it's the same thing, lottery is the same thing. Anybody want to play, want to play like a scratch off, there's a different type of lottery. But village doesn't gain any, any kind of revenue from the lottery. But from the, from the gaming, village will get the tax revenue, additional, whatever we lost in our gas volume.
All right. Thank you. I'll open it to the board for discussion too. But I've put a lot of, I've thought about this a lot both ways. Not as, as the mayor and the liquor commissioner. And also going back to something Scott Pierce and trustee Maisik, trustee Pierce and trustee Maisik we're talking about earlier, is the fact that I asked the trust or the madam clerk to give me a, a total of all the licenses that we have in town. The mixture of all of them, it's about forty different licenses. I don't, I like having the ability when a new business comes in town, whether it's a restaurant or a brewery or entertainment center, to be able to give them a license for that. I do think that we, if we go this path, we need to start considering looking at our ordinance and our code and making sure there are some caps on those numbers. Because my only fear with this is then who does it open the door to? Every tobacco shop in town is going to want it. What if a couple of small stores on Main Street that are having a hard time making money want pouring license? And I really, really feel for the plight of the gas station. So if this is something that goes forward, I would like to see and look at this as a twofold thing. Not only, you know, limiting how far this expands, but you know, if it's three, I'm, I'm thinking of three gas stations in town off, right off the top of my head that are going to want this license, which I understand why. And really, I can't come up with any other form of financial relief to give these businesses. I've thought about it a lot. So if we did something like this, I would be looking for us to do it in a way that we capped it at up. And here we just talked about competition, but you know, a three, three license thing or something along those lines so that the current business owners who have been here for years are taking advantage of it. And, you know, somebody else coming in just to, you know, get a license. So saying that, I'll leave it up to the, I know there's been, I've, this is one of those items I've gone back and forth on many times in my head. But I want to hear from the board and their stance on this. And obviously, being business friendly is important and helping our businesses survive and what the state and the county have done to them taxing wise is, you know, out of our hands and a shame. So I don't want to lose them all to, to Wisconsin, but I'll start here if anyone has any comments. Trustee Bluthart?
Yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I think we need to move forward on this though. And it seems like this has been on this agenda probably three or four times in the last two years. And I think we need to either decide that we're going to allow these and, and move forward with whatever ordinances or however we need to amend our current ordinances to allow these, or we have to say no. And I think we're at that point now. I'm in favor of it. I don't think it's, these gas stations are getting killed right here on the border. And this would be something that we could do to assist them at this time. But that being said, I, what you just mentioned about limits, things like that, I'd have to see what you came up with. But I think it's just time that we need to progress on this and quit, keep putting it off. We need to give these guys an answer on whether we're going to do this or not.
Appreciate that. Trustee McNeil, any comments?
Yes. So I do feel for the gas stations as well, and it's a tough decision because I understand and have reflected upon what Mayor Gartner has brought up and also trustee Bluthart, and I'm leaning toward agreeing that we need to move forward and do it. To me, the gaming system is very consistent with the gas station popping in, getting a Lotto ticket, hitting, you know, the game. So to me, it goes together and we've got them in the piggly wiggly, but I also understand you don't want it to be saturated with everybody asking for these. So I'm really in favor, I guess, of moving forward with it and making a decision, but also looking at our ordinance and discussing that further to tighten things up. I don't really know how to go about that. I'd like to talk to the mayor and the village attorney and get other feedback from the trustees. But I guess that's my position is I'm for it, but with maybe some limitations.
Trustee Pierce?
Wow. I'm, I'm just absolutely amazed that we're, we're going down the road of just selling out Antioch. We are spending fifteen million dollars developing a state-of-the-art cornerstone facility right across the street from this. And because we have individuals who think all business is good business, if it's bringing money in, we're going to vote yes for it. I, I am saddened. I know that there are people on the board who haven't met a gas station they don't like for whatever reason. But I think that we need to think long and hard about how we're opening this up. Because if I was a non-gas station owner, I would be going, hmm, I'm going to put in some liquor and I'm going to do it. If they don't let me, I'm going to sue them because they're setting a number on it. And yes, Ed, I'm being hypocritical because I think there should be no numbers on the marijuana. But I think that we need to think long and hard about the image we're trying to betray in our village. I was just down in Quincy, Illinois, and every gas station has slot flags slapping in the air. And every, there's dispensaries on every corner almost in Quincy, and it doesn't make the town look good. If this is what the board wants, I can't stop them. I can speak against it. I can say that we're selling out Antioch for cash. And we have told the, the, the small grocery stores and the, and the gas stations repeatedly, no on this. But if you just keep coming back and keep coming back, eventually you're going to get what you want. So the board can vote how they want, but I am, I am dead set against this. I think we are, we are on the road to selling on Antioch when we could be on the road to developing a miracle in Antioch. So I, I object to this strenuously.
Thank you, trustee Pierce. Trustee Maisik?
So I'm so glad this park's being built because I can't wait to get my slurpee at Speedway. Because I understand they're selling slurpees at Speedway. Wait, that's Because I understand they're selling slurpees at Speedway. Wait, that's not there anymore. That's an empty gravel parking lot. So we build a thirteen million dollar park and then we get, wait, a boarded up billing, building right across from our thirteen million dollar park. But no, wait, we could have helped them, but we didn't. So now we got a thirteen million dollar park with the boarded up building. Man, that's a smart move. Already got one. Can't get my slurpee. Love slurpees. I don't know. Jerry's my favorite. Coke's the second. So let's just board them all up. Makes no sense. It's a video game. Everybody's got them in their houses. It's just people want, you, you want to regulate morals. Makes zero sense. Zero sense to regulate someone's morals. They want to put twenty dollars in a machine and, and lose it. They want to throw it out their car window. They want to hand it to, to, to someone. Here, go buy yourself a meal. Good for them. You don't regulate morals. I mean, it's just the silliest thing. You build a thirteen million dollar park and you're going to have a boarded up building. How many times did you go down eighty-three when the sicko station was out of business? And you go, man, that looks horrible. That's, that's coming into our town and that gas station out of business. And, and, and they get zeros on the gas, gas pumps. That's what you want to look at across from a park. That makes sense. Good point.
I will say, um, one thing about the gaming, um, in general, this is not related directly. There's this item, um, I think I'll ask Mr. Gergen and, um, staff to start looking at additional restrictions on the flags and the signs of all the gaming stuff. And I don't, you know, I think that does not give the best aesthetic look. And I've seen as that grows more, more and more of the flags and, you know, I appreciate them advertising it. But yeah, I don't really love that look. And I agree with trustee Pierce on that. Trustee Peterson, any discussion?
Yes, uh, I have a hard time with this. I truly appreciate, oh, the state of Illinois and even the county board. Really pressured you and, and, uh, raised the taxes so high that everyone goes over the border. I understand that and I certainly don't want three empty gas stations in town. I don't. Um, and I know you're hanging on and I appreciate that. I just don't want to open a door, a garage door, and everybody's coming through. And there's a line out there trying to get a pouring license in gaming. If we could find a way to limit this, shut that door. I would, I would be in favor of helping them out, but, but we, we need to do that. We need to figure this out.
Alright, any other discussion on this now?
Yeah.
I think, um, we need to sit with an alert and say, this is again for you, Mr. Darney, I think is the village. Uh, we need to sit and look at our code and what doors we leave open and what doors we limit. Um, like I said, I'd really love to see all those.
Yeah, I understand that then.
Flags and the signs, I don't like those. But, um, I would say, um, you know, we will continue, uh, this discussion. But I'd ask the village attorney and staff to look at, um, other villages or restrictions on the, um, number of license without limiting our ability to, um, grant a license if a business is coming into town. As we develop things out on one seventy-three, as restaurants and other buildings come in, I just don't want to, I don't want to put us in a trick bag where we cannot do that. So, um, I appreciate your, um, coming before us and, um, we will keep this on our radar. And, um.
Yes, uh, I want to add is like we, we, in this case, we are just modifying only the Class D, which is a gas station. Like we're not opening door for everybody else. So we, and then everybody, a new license application, we can put a restriction, anybody has to come across, um, in front of the board to get approvals. And that will put a section, anybody who is a new, they, if they want a license, something like that, um, they will get approvals. So we can add that kind of restrictions.
Oh yeah, trustee, yeah, trustee Peterson.
In response to that, in response to what you just said, anyone can come to us and ask for a pouring license for their business. That's what I, I'm getting at here. If we say yes to you, what's to stop five stores on Main Street that sell gifts? They want to pour champagne in their store while the ladies walk around and look for gifts. And they want to put a couple of gaming machines in the back too. And that's our problem here. That's the problem. So trying to figure out, yes, they have to come before us, but how do we say no? That's my problem.
Okay.
And your honor.
Yeah, trustee Pierce, yes.
Um, back to what trustee Peterson's saying, I fully agree. If we say, if we start saying yes because of this special circumstance, everybody's going to have a special circumstance. And we're going to have to say yes to everybody. We are in the process of removing our ability to, to control things and say no. Um, and I'm, I am sorry about the gas station situations. It wasn't me that did it. It was the county board. It was the state government. They did it. But a lot of these gas stations I do see with the game, they're in the middle of the state. They're not getting relief. They're just getting money. And this is all about getting money. Um, uh, I do understand more people in the border of the thing go across the, the, the border. But this is just opening up the floodgates. And as far as the trustee Maisick not being able to get his slurpees, that place has been closed for fifteen or twenty years, which was way before, uh, this all went down. So, um, I, I, I think it got something in there that had the placing frequency every day that would provide a slurpee type drink.
So I want to add to this thing is like, this is just because of the gas station, because the gas, uh, is so much cheaper across the street, right? It's like seventy, eighty cents difference. So that's what I'm saying is if we can put restrictions only on a Class D, which is a gas station license. I'm not shocked, I'm talking about the gift shops have a, the liquor license. So is a Class D, which is a designated gas station liquor license. Which is classed as a gas station liquor license.
We'll have our legal team and, um, I gotta read through the code, you know, refresher on certain items. And I, um, yeah, asked the, uh, trustees if they get, uh, bored one day to go through, look at the liquor code, look at the different classes and what they fall under. But I appreciate, um, you being here, Mr. Darney, and then we will continue to, you know, move this forward. Okay?
Yeah. And I'm sorry, I was not able to personally attend this meeting because of the last minute modification. I was not able to get in there.
No, we appreciate you sitting through the whole thing. So thank you. Next item is discussion regarding a memorandum of understanding with the fraternal order of police related to Sergeant Voluntary Employee Benefits Association Plan Contributions, uh, Chief Kutchow.
So a number of years ago, uh, when the current collective bargaining agreement was established and ratified, a VIBA provision was, was, uh, put together. It's a tax sheltered, uh, medical savings account, essentially is what it is. And the contract allows the union to vote for, uh, changes to the funding mechanism and how they support that, that fund. About two years ago, the patrol officers group, as a group moved from a benefit time contribution to a two percent of their wages contribution. The sergeants at the time remained. Um, we've had some turnover in the ranks, there's retirements. And now the current group of sergeants wishes to align with the patrol officers current agreement where they will cease contributing their, uh, thirty-four hours of benefit time into the plan on them, monetized and transitioned to a two percent of their earnings into the plan. Uh, there is no financial impact to the village. This is entirely a employee funded benefit.
Thank you. Any discussion? Alright, we'll move this to the, uh, regular meeting next time. Thank you. Uh, last item on the cow is, uh, the Oliveri North facade grant request, uh, Mr. Gergen.
Yes, thank you, your honor. Again, this matter comes back to the board, uh, for reconsideration. As we recall, uh, last month, we came before a concept, uh, for Oliveri's Norse, which submitted a facade grant. Um, the, we worked with the applicant. The applicant has actually had an opportunity to work with the contractor. As you recall, originally, um, the proposed, uh, a general, uh, concept, uh, which I'll kind of walk you through from an architectural perspective. Uh, Mr. Cornus is not here, the architect here this, this evening. But, uh, originally based on a very rough estimate, there was a estimate of approximately a three hundred fifty thousand dollar project. Um, the applicant has actually had a, an opportunity to actually work with the contractor. Uh, and the good news is that number has come down substantially. The applicant has identified a, a total cost now of approximately a hundred eighty-one thousand dollars, a hundred eighty-two thousand dollars. Generally for the same, um, proposal, as you recall, the applicant is proposing an extensive facade renovation. They're proposing a, a new stock hole, uh, around the building. They're proposing to re- remove a mansured canopy that's been there for many years to re- to, uh, replace that with a historic, uh, historical sensative cornice. Uh, and more importantly, the applicant is proposing a new window system, which would expand their outdoor eating and provide a lot more, uh, really vibrancy on Lake Street with regards to outdoor eating. Uh, would be an expandable area. I think we kind of, Mr. Cornus kind of walked you through that at the last meeting. Um, but with regards to the actual facade grant, as you know, it's a fifty percent facade grant. So we, you take fifty percent of the proposed total, that would be approximately, uh, ninety, ninety-one thousand dollars. And, and what staff is, um, proposing is that that number be broken down into, um, forty-five thousand dollar payments over two years. Um, so we're really looking for the input of the village board on this proposed facade grant. If there's support for this facade grant, we would bring it back for future consideration at our next meeting. You had the actual facade improvement, uh, summary, cost estimates. As you recall, there are some items that we, uh, did I highlight that we, the staff identified that we did not believe they were eligible costs. So we did deduct that. So there's a slight variation from the total, um, that's incorporated in the summary that you have before you. Um, but again, what we're proposing is approximately two payments of forty-five thousand, four hundred seventy-two dollars over two years. With that, I'll be more than happy to ask, uh, answer any questions. Alright.
And for, um, refresher and, um, new members, our budget item is a hundred fifty thousand dollars annually for this program, just for reference. Alright, any questions on this side of the die, sir, discussion? Between you have any questions or comments? Okay, trustee Bluthart.
Um, not a real question, just comments. I'm, I'm glad to see you're fine tuning it here and that price going down for once. I, I like that. And I do appreciate the offer to split it over the two, um, years, two fiscal years. Um, but I do have a question for the attorney. Are we allowed to do that? To split it?
Yes.
Based, so we can approve it?
Yeah.
Under one fiscal year, but then make the payment eligible.
Yeah, you defer it. Yeah.
Okay. Does that limit, um, our ability with the hundred and fifty thousand that's budgeted? Do we have to account for the ninety thousand or do we account just for the amount we?
No, we would only, we would only basically account for that approximately forty-five thousand dollars that expended within this fiscal year.
Um, alright, I'm in, I'm in favor of moving forward on this as well and, and look forward to this project happening.
Trustee McNeil.
Only, um, question maybe for Michael is, is it a hundred thousand or a hundred and fifty thousand for the grant program?
We budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand for the facade program for this fiscal year.
Okay, got it, got it. So I'm also happy to see the number go down and this seems much more reasonable and I don't really have any other comments.
Trustee Pierce.
Well, um, we're going to be rich pretty soon. So, um, I think we could go in and adjust our budget and increase it. So if we can just pay it right up front, get them done and over with because they come and ask for it. And, um, I'm thinking that, um, with our appropriations being, uh, skillfully done, there where we can, we could cover any increase and we could just pay it once this year and be done with dealing with this.
Thank you, uh, trustee Maisick.
You guys on the building? Who was the building? Okay. Just as long as the landlord, then you fix it up, then he goes, thanks, see you later.
Trustee Peters.
Michael, have we ever done this before? Two different pay, you know, one facade grant, two payments?
No, we have not. My recollection is we've not broken it down. Um, as you, as our, you remember the largest facade grant was, um, we ever approved was a hundred thousand dollars. But we had a little more in the budget several years ago. It was for Station Fifty-One. Uh, because we've identified at least one other, potentially two other facade grants. We thought, oh, might be prudent to break this one down, which would give us an opportunity to have a couple more facade grants this year.
Okay, and possibly to trustee Pierce's point. I mean, I know it was tongue in cheek, but we probably should in the future. Maybe if there is more money coming in, that we should add a little more to this facade grant program. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
It may have sounded, it may have sounded tongue, tongue in cheek, but deadly serious. We should just pay it and get it done and over with. So we're not dealing with this twice.
Drag it on. Um, alright, so we will move this, um, to the next village board meeting for, for the discussion vote, um, how it's going to be paid for, it can be decided at, in, you know, one or two trounces of that, at that meeting. Um, any other business? Alright, entertain a motion to adjourn, please. Motion trustee Peterson.
Second.
Second trustee McNeil, roll call please.
Yes.
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 No.
Five voting yes motion carries. Eight thirty, uh, one.